All righty. Today is Tuesday, February 13th. I call the Marlboro Public School Committee to order. We will start with the Project Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. We will skip down to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Murphy?
Thank you, Mayor Christian.
I don't know why that's so funny.
No, you like it.
It's my name.
Recently, I have been the central office team, a group of teachers, community members, parents. We've all been focused on the Student Opportunity Act plan. Over the last few weeks, I've met with groups of teachers, administrators, parents, and community members to share information, data, and potential focus areas for upcoming Student Opportunity Act plans. We had a leadership team meeting where we had approximately seventy-four administrators and teachers. We've had two parent meetings, an AM and PM session, where I reviewed similar information as was shared with the staff. And I have surveyed all of those groups. Last week, I sent out an email, and I have over seventy responses from the educators in the Marlboro Public Schools, giving feedback on the areas that they would like our next plan to focus on. And the translators currently have the survey questions, and I will update the survey and send it out to all parents. I will also post overview on my webpage for the parents on the website and send out a link to everyone to that page. So we are on track to have a plan by the end of March. I'm hoping to have a draft for feedback at the first March meeting because the school committee has to approve it at the last meeting. And I don't think it's fair to ask you to do that at the same meeting that I am presenting. Student cellphone use update. Over the last few years, there was an increase of student use of cellphones in our schools. At times, this use has interfered with classroom instruction and or created conflict with students in our schools. Cellphone use in our schools has been one area that the leadership team has developing school-wide common expectations and implementing this year. The K-5 schools developed common cellphone expectations for all students in all buildings. They are the same expectations in all four K-5 buildings. Students and families were asked to review those expectations when they began school this year. Cellphones are not to be used during the school day, and if a student has a cellphone, it must remain in their backpacks during the school day. If it is seen, it is taken. In the fall, Marlboro Public Schools received a state cellphone grant from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The grant allowed us to purchase Yonder Pouches for all students and staff at the Whitcomb School. School-wide systems for implementing and overseeing cellphone use with the Yonder Pouches has shifted from the classroom teachers to the team greeting students every single morning. Whitcomb School has reported an eighty-six percent decrease in referrals for cellphone violations since the Yonder Pouches were implemented. Throughout the spring, the K-12 principals will be collecting additional feedback on the current cellphone expectations, and the team will plan any adjustments to the current Marlboro High School practices as well, since they're the only school that doesn't have a system in place right now. If any adjustments to current Marlboro High School expectations or practices are considered, teachers, students, and parents will be included in these discussions. I did also, it was a topic that I asked for parent feedback, both at PTO meetings and as well as the parent open coffees that I've had. And everyone, there's been a lot of positive reports, and the students are reporting very positive experiences as well. So Dussey has asked district to consider creating an official cellphone policy. Based on data and feedback from school leadership, teachers, and families, I am recommending that we not create a school committee policy at this time, but of course, that would be up to the policy subcommittee. I have also attached to my report included my mid-year goals update, and I included Asabet Valley Collaborative Annual Report as well. Are there any questions?
One of the only things which I think we were talking about when we got here was just clarification because I think some of the Aspen area probably needs to get cleaned up. But that's actually Jody's. Never mind.
Okay.
And she sent an email. She just sent an email with the cleaned up version.
I just said, never mind. That was me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Oh, I, I, on the, on the Asabet Valley Collaborative?
Yep.
I was reading through, and I saw that we utilize their music therapy?
Yes.
Can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. So music therapy is, is a service that we contract out with the collaborative for our substantially separate programs. And the person who's licensed as a music therapist helps with like communication skills, like through music, and sometimes it's social skills that they're working on. But they come in weekly, once a week, to each of the four elementary schools to provide additional, this is above and beyond like participating in music classes with their typical peers.
Great. Thank you. I just thought it was great. Just wanted to hear about it. So that was the other thing. Thank you.
Anything else? If not, we'll move down to the Assistant Superintendent of Student Services report.
Thank you very much. Tonight, I would like to inform the school committee that kindergarten registration is now open. We are accepting kindergarten registration for the fall of 2024. Registration is for children who reside in Marlboro, who will turn five years old by September, sorry, by August 31st of 2024. The district highly encourages families to register their child for kindergarten by June 30th in order to be able to receive notifications from their child's school about upcoming kindergarten events. The entire registration process is now online, and parents can upload any required documents as part of their electronic application. Even though registration can be completed completely virtual, the Registration Parent Outreach Center will have extended hours on set dates to provide in-person support to families to complete their child's registration. An informational flyer is included in the packet, as well as other information that is provided on our website. All documents are translated and are available on the district's website. Also, I wanted to give you an update on the CPAC, which is the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, that Director John Fletcher had provided information at our last, is part of my last report. We had a very, very successful turnout at our January 25th Special Parent Advisory Council meeting to reestablish this organization. There were forty families that attended the first meeting to be held in over four years. Leslie Leslie, and that is her name, is from the Federation of Children for Special Needs, presented information to the group about the purpose of CPAC and the importance of having this advisory group. Of those who attended, fourteen parents have volunteered to be part of the interim team in the absence of an elected board that will be meeting with the support of John Fletcher, Director of Special Education. Heather, sorry, Mendonka, whose child attends ECC, is currently serving as interim president. Their next meeting will be held on Thursday, February 29th, at 7:00 PM in the Whitcomb Commons. The tentative agenda for that meeting includes discussion of officer roles, review resources provided by the Federation for Children with Special Needs, updating bylaws and mission statement, updating the social media and website, and developing a proposed meeting schedule for the rest of the year. I will ask members of the CPAC to present at a future school committee meeting. And we're like really, really thrilled with the turnout. Leslie, Leslie from the Federation had said that that is probably one of the highest turnouts she's ever seen at one of the workshops that she's presented.
Great.
That's great.
Any questions?
None?
No.
Thank you.
Actually, sorry. It is, the question is just, I know that there's something in the law around CPAC that says that they have to regularly be engaged with the school committee. And I'm not a hundred percent sure what that is, but just in the process, you know, I know some school committees have a representative from the school committee that's like a liaison. Whatever you need from us, just let us know.
Sure, absolutely. I'll let them know. And there's not a lot of guidance on like regularly meeting, so that's really varies from district to district on how they participate. But we really anticipate that they'll be able to come regularly and report on their activities to the school committee. Thank you.
Do you think anyone would want to go to those meetings and be that liaison, or no?
I was gonna say, I definitely would love to know when they're happening and to try and be a part of it. I'm thrilled that you all have been able to kind of get it off the ground and get it started again. So if I can help, I'd be more than happy to, you know, be a member, to be there. Just need a heads up when things are, so I can.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Do you think the plan is to meet weekly, quarterly, monthly, rather?
I believe that they'll plan on having monthly meetings, and then I'm sure there'll be some workshops that the Federation will host. One of the workshops that is required that needs to be done annually is a basics rights workshop. So they'll be working with the Federation to set that up.
Sure. I don't mean to put you on the spinal. It's brand new, so the kinks have to be ironed out.
Yes. As soon as we have future dates from that, from the 29th meeting, we'll definitely get that out there, especially to be able to put that on the website and communicate that out to other special education families.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks.
No, go ahead.
I just want to, excuse me, I just want to point out, though, that Ms. O'Brien just did update us with correct documents that were not, that were in the packet for the Aspen. The correct ones are on the website, but our packet.
Correct.
Had the wrong information, so we will update our packet in case somebody is looking at that as well. But the information is correct on the website.
Thank you.
No problem.
And thank you for saying so.
Perfect.
Great minds.
Great minds, yes. Any other questions? So just for a few housekeeping, for those of you that are watching, we skipped the presentation today, so I think we need a motion to table that till our next meeting. Just, I believe with this snow day, we will postpone, so if we can have a motion to that. Thank you. And it's been seconded. All in favor to table? Thank you. All righty. Moving on to the acceptance of minutes.
Motion to accept the January 23rd, 2024 minutes.
Motion is on the table and seconded. Is there any questions about the minutes? If not, all in favor. Motion carries. Public comment. There's one or two going once. We'll have to ask this three times. Is there any public comment going once? Is there any public comment going twice? And last, any public comments? Seeing none, we will close that for public comment. Moving on to action items and reports. MHS Robotics Overnight Trip to Championship.
I'm going to do that. Yes, thank you. Joanne Mahoney was going to be here, but with the weather, I told her that I would speak to it. The Marlboro High School Robotics Team is requesting an permission to attend the regional overnight trip. One of the three squads qualified for this regional event, and it's being held from February 27th to the, 25th to the 27th. And this is the opportunity that they have to qualify for the world championships. So very exciting. And she has attached the agenda of what the students, the team would be doing from the 25th and the 27th. So at this time, I'm asking for approval for this overnight trip.
Motion to approve.
Seconded. Any questions?
I just want to know if it's a Tools team that gets to go. It is?
Yeah.
Yes, of course. But he's the one we know.
I just want a bucket hat.
Any questions on the table? If not, all in favor, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to voices required out of state field trip. I don't.
I think Dr. Riley was going to do that. I can do it if you want. No?
Oh, absolutely. I'm happy to. Yeah, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. Yeah. So after a very successful trip in 2023, voices required. Would like to travel back to New York City this spring. We've been working very hard at fundraising in order to be able to afford the trip. While we are there, we will be seeing a Broadway show and also touring Broadway, the Broadway Museum, and watching the international competition for acapella finals at the Town Hall.
Excellent. The itinerary is also attached to the request.
Motion to approve.
Motion has been seconded. Any questions?
I just had one question about chaperones. Seventeen kids and one chaperone, that's like.
I was just gonna ask, do they want another chaperone?
Yes, I'm happy to accommodate if another.
Sure.
No, I'm thrilled that they're getting this opportunity again, especially with, you know, Voices Required kind of being one of those groups that's not the group that gets to meet during the day, and so they only have to do certain things. I'm thrilled that they're getting this opportunity. And, you know, Shannon previously, as well as then working with Caleb, have just killed it on doing more and more and more with this group. And it's just an amazing gem that we have here.
Absolutely. Yeah, they were great during the inauguration. Further questions? Seeing none. The motion is on the table and seconded. All in favor. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. All righty, moving on to MHS Program of Studies. Dr. Riley?
Thank you for having me again to discuss the Program of Studies. And so a couple of things. Number one, not many changes from our previous discussion, but I want to reiterate my thanks to the school committee, to the leadership team, for all the work that's gone into developing this program over the last six years. A couple of things that this program has led to, we're one of the few schools that offers 23 advanced placement courses in the region. We also have seven onsite early college classes. And because of the buildup of this Program of Studies over the years, we've seen a 28% increase in the number of students that are taking at least one advanced course in the areas of advanced placement or early college before they graduate from Marlboro High School between where we are now and where we were in 2018. So thank you for all your support over the years. A couple of additions to this agenda item that weren't in the last one. Number one, you now have the Program of Studies document, so you can take a look at that in depth. Second is the addition of number six, the Support Technician Certification Pathway. So that was the Technion program that we talked a little bit about at the last meeting. Last, based on Ms. Hennessy's recommendation, we did add in that graphic of the mathematics pathway into that section. And I have some more feedback to take a look at expanding maybe that type of a graphic out for other departments as well, so that it's very, very user-friendly compared to some of the things that we've had written out. So we will take that feedback back and make that happen.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any questions?
I just have one. On the Technion thing that's in the Program of Studies, I think someone just cut and pasted. It says that the kids are gonna go to classes in the morning and then show up at Patriot Ambulance. So I think you just need to check that one.
Thank you for picking up on that. We'll fix that typo. Yes.
Sorry. I lost.
It's okay.
So I'll try to just go down my list, and some may overlap. So Virtual High School.
Yep.
So, oh.
Thanks for the reminder. Sorry. So Virtual High School, is there the ability that some of these courses can be taken to allow for like added courses above and beyond the base number of courses we normally have within the day? And the reason I'm asking that is like we have the seven slots. And so we have some students specifically often.
like we have the seven slots. And so we have some students specifically often, we have some issues, if you will, for some of the students that are in music ensemble classes. And they're looking to have additional core coursework, if you will, whether it be in science or math or something. And it doesn't necessarily fit because of when, say, the jazz course is, or when the a cappella course is. And I'm just curious, are we in a position to allow for VHS seats to be utilized so they could take that additional course? And Risha's nodding her head. I think that's something that, you know, there are a lot of students that kind of fall into that category. And it's not really mentioned in here, so that's why I'm asking.
Sure. Yeah, part of the, the whole purpose behind the VHS program that we've developed over 20-plus years was to supplement what was being offered during the school day. I think one of the things that guidance counselors encounter with students, and Risha can probably speak to this a little bit better, is how much the student is taking on in comparison to what their day looks like and how much they can handle. So we have seven courses already built into the school day. As I said before, we're most fortunate as a school that those 23 advanced placement courses that we offer are all in person with teachers, which most schools can't, can't say that they offer that. So when students are building a schedule and then they add VHS into the mix, VHS is very rigorous. There's a lot of commitment that goes into it, becomes part of the student's transcript. So the conversations with the counselors and the students is what they can actually handle and what they can balance, based on what not only their school day looks like, but what their outside of the school day looks like. Sort of preaching to the choir on that, right, Risha, as somebody who does it all, three-sport athlete and a leader across multiple clubs and activities?
Yeah, I think the VHS courses are a lot, and taking it without that set period of time during the school day would just be a lot more added onto that. I think it depends on the type of student it is and the type of class. It is the VHS if it's an AP rather than like an elective. I think that matters a lot because the AP classes are.
Is it? Okay. Yeah, like it just depends on the course, if it's an elective course rather than AP, because the AP classes are very fast-paced and it does require a lot of work and studying. And I don't know how I would have done it without that hour in the school day. But I know that the elective classes are still rigorous, but not as much as the honors or AP classes. So depending on the class, the student, I think it could be an option.
Yep. And every year, we extend more VHS seats. So with respect to your original question about how those conversations go, if there's a student that can put the VHS course into their schedule, that can handle the workload that's gonna come with it, we add them in, even if we've already exhausted all the seats that we have, we buy more seats.
Thank you. I mean, and that's, I guess, where I'm thinking of prerequisites. In some cases, if you in the end see that you have decided that you want to take a higher level AP down the road, say, in one of the sciences, yet you haven't gotten, say, I don't know, chemistry in one area, but yet you know that biology is the one that you want to extend, if there's that opportunity.
Sure.
I just think that in some cases, VHS is a little like unknown, and it's hard to know whether you could take it or not.
Yeah, and I think that, like, I know the scheduling for music students is hard, but I like how VHS has the flexibility to be any period of the day that you choose it to be, just whatever you have open. So I think that flexibility is good in itself.
Yeah, so I don't know the how, and that's really your thing. I just think that it somehow probably needs to be in there to help parents and students have that conversation on recognizing that that could be an opportunity to help them. Because I think over the years, we've definitely all heard of families having a tough time trying to figure out their trajectory.
Sure.
And that might, not for everybody, but might be a good alternative that we offer, which I think it's fabulous that we offer it, so.
Oh, absolutely. Yep, and I'll take that feedback back to the department and also the supervisor of guidance as well. Yeah.
The next was around the QCC credits.
Yep.
Is there a way that something might be able to be mentioned within the QCC area that alerts people that these credits don't automatically transfer to all colleges? Because it's much more transferable from a state college standpoint, but not necessarily in a private college standpoint. And it almost seems like parents and students, again, need to understand that it's a good potential, but doesn't necessarily automatically cut across.
Yeah. So sort of like building in language that has that as like a disclaimer? Is that what you're recommending?
Awareness, yeah. I got, you know, disclaimer or awareness. I think it's, it's just, don't just assume that these credits automatically revert, cause.
But, no, I get your point, but I think it's clarified with pathways aligned with mass transfer program.
And it says to articulated four-year institutions.
Right.
Doesn't say all four-year.
And then it says for. I mean, I don't, I would never make an assumption that it's automatic. Yeah. Ever. Just like APs.
Right, are not automatic because it's tests and all of that. True.
Right.
Okay. I mean, I, I guess the mass state schools versus private.
Well, but that's mass transfer.
Yeah.
But it's not also just mass.
Yeah.
Well, and it does have a link too that goes to.
Right, it says right there.
Yeah, okay.
I think they, I think they provided a lot of information on that.
Okay.
We've actually had a lot of luck, though, with the private institutions too. And so when you look at colleges and you look at how colleges invest in students, what they're looking for is students that are gonna stay and be persistent through degree attainment.
Yeah.
And students that participate in early college are more likely to do that. So as a selling point for the college, it's benefited like WPI, for example, we've never had a issue with our credits transferring there. And I think it's because they're looking at investing in a student that's gonna stick it out for the four years.
Very cool.
And make it to that degree.
It's more retention than anything else.
Yeah.
Awesome. Math pathways, I wanted to say. Thank you. Love having.
Thank you. Thank you for the suggestion.
Like having that. And I do think that it would benefit on having something visual throughout. So that would be great.
Yep.
In many of the other areas. Question around that, though, is, and this might go back to Ms. Khan for some conversation too. Are there opportunities where students, though, like on that math trajectory, we were showing how in eighth grade, you know, they have the advanced eighth grade opportunities.
The accelerated.
The accelerated two, I think it was the pathway two or whatever, allows for getting to calculus in junior year. Are there other opportunities if somebody doesn't get that acceleration? Like we were talking about, only a certain number are able to take the eighth grade acceleration. Yet what if they actually, they're very good, they just didn't meet that, you know, they were 31 instead of 30 kids.
Sure.
Are we in a position that we can find opportunities to accelerate them so that they could still potentially get to calculus within that junior year? I mean, I saw that we have the pathway one.
Yeah.
I'm just curious about other opportunities.
So the way that the common core is written that follows the mass frameworks is it's, the math is what we say in mathematics, it's ruthlessly cumulative. It's step by step, right? So that's why we do acceleration and not sort of like advanced, right? It's because we're going faster through a cumulative scope and sequence. When it comes to the state's preference on graduates from high school, the minimum graduate preference is Algebra II. So when you look at the Marlboro High School pathways that are offered, right, beyond Algebra II, we have Precalculus, we have Honors Intro to Calculus, we have Calculus AB, which I think as, as the former department chair or math supervisor, I would say Calculus AB is really like the mountaintop of where we want to see students get to before they graduate from high school. So getting to Calculus BC, multivariate calculus, that's your Calculus III, that's a, that's a tall order for students that's not in our accelerated pathway. Doesn't mean that it can't be done with additional work and additional work that we've seen that students can take advantage of, things like doubling up in mathematics one of the years if they choose. Like usually Algebra I and geometry can match up nicely together.
Yeah.
Or vice versa, Algebra II and geometry can match up. Although, again, scope and sequence wise, your geometry is a deliberate step now before Algebra II, right? So that has to be taken into consideration. We have had students that have done work over the summer, not many students, but for those that have, we're always happy to accelerate their growth and challenge them in the classroom. And so, but when, when we talk about the opportunity and the equity that we provide as a, as a school district, we really have secured great footing by saying that every single student that enters our high school has a shot at reaching Calculus AB before they graduate. Not many high schools can say that. And so I think, you know, looking at that and feeling good about the equity that we've developed and the opportunity that we've developed, most colleges are gonna make students retake Calculus II and beyond. So even, even schools that have articulation agreements usually say Calculus I is where it stops. When you come to us, you start taking our math classes. But, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's just looking for, and maybe it really is more on working with the guidance counselors.
Sure.
And having the discussion about what those opportunities are.
Options.
And the options.
Yep.
Around that. Because if somebody's really focused on that, especially on wanting to get into college in that area and a higher level, they may be looking at trying to achieve having calculus in their junior year so that they have that to present when they're being part of the consideration.
100%.
So, but that's probably more specific.
Yep.
Science-wise question. I know we've touched about this like back and forth where we have physics right now, and mostly it's intro to physics. It's not even physics in total, honors physics. Have we toyed with the option of providing opportunities where it would be physics and bio so that there could be a choice? So if that science kid really wants to go on a further trajectory down the life sciences, I know we've gone back and forth over the years on this discussion.
Sure, yeah. Well, I think if, if, I'll just bring up our meeting from May of this, of last year, 2023, we had to make a pivot move. We discussed as the school committee in terms of being able to find enough physics teachers to meet the needs of our physics-first approach. And we weren't able to do that by the end of the summer, and we had talked about that going in. So we ended up offering biology as one-third of the freshman option. And I think that when we start to talk about opportunities for acceleration in other content areas, science is naturally set up for that biology, chemistry, dive into AP approach. So it actually, it does help us with a little more flexibility. Staffing-wise, it's worked out for us as well. And I think as we continue our discussions, part of it will be, you know, do we continue to offer that one-third biology and then the intro to physics for the other two teams?
And I guess that that's why I'm wondering, because we have that graphic, again, with the planning, where it's really highlighting for the intro to physics.
Sure.
Do we want to actually put something where it's intro to physics slash biology so that people are aware from a planning standpoint that this could be your choice?
Yep. And we still have that from the previous, we had that option. So we still have that. Absolutely.
Yeah, I just think it, in one of the graphics earlier on, it really only highlighted, I think in ninth grade, more intro to physics as opposed to the opportunity of bio. And I thought that that was one of the options. So.
Yep.
And I love the Portuguese, the heritage Portuguese and the Spanish that's being offered.
Sure.
I would love it if down the road, there was also an availability of looking at intro to Portuguese as another option.
It is.
Well, no, but it's heritage. I thought it was heritage.
It's conversational.
Conversational Portuguese.
Conversational. You know what, I, I thought intro, never mind. In my head, I read it as not having intro, but conversational. Okay, thank you. And yeah, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nope. So we'll make those proper changes and then we'll vote on it next meeting?
Sure.
Yes? Or do you feel comfortable with the amendments?
I'll make a motion to, because I know there's a timing thing that's going on with all this, and we've already pushed it off.
We already delayed it two weeks.
I make a motion to approve the POS as amended, agreed upon amendments.
Sure. So can you just reiterate what those, we're cleaning up the verbiage of the EMT program, correct?
The Technion program, yeah.
And is there anything else?
We have clarifying.
So everyone knows what we're voting on.
Do you want me to review what I heard and make sure that everything's captured? Fixing the typo affiliated with the Support Technician Certification Program, clarifying the opportunity for students when it comes to virtual high school and how that can be built into their schedule. Looking at the math options, that's, so the biology pathway, articulating that for incoming freshman students and how that relates to the science
And I think that's it.
That is what I have.
Yeah.
Is anyone in agreement?
That's the motion.
For those. Motion seconded. Any further questions? Not, all approved. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Riley.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to the updated fiscal year '25 budget calendar. Mr. LaFleur?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On November 14th, 2023, the school committee accepted our proposed fiscal '25 budget calendar. Due to ongoing negotiations and other factors, we need to push that back a little bit. So we are proposing some new dates. March 12th, 2024, the superintendent's budget will be delivered to the school committee. March 26th, 2024, the budget workshop will be held at 4:00 PM. This is a change from what's in the packet due to a conflict. April 9th, 2024, school committee agrees to a final budget figure for the public hearing. April 30th will be the public hearing on the proposed budget and vote for the budget in regular session. And on May 6th, the school committee will deliver the fiscal '25 budget request over to the city council and yourself. So we're asking the school committee to vote on this approval to update the budget calendar as enunciated.
Okay. Questions? Yes?
April 30th is not a regularly scheduled meeting.
It is now, isn't it?
Oh, that was a date. I'm sorry. Correct. I'm sorry, I did not change it in my calendar.
It was originally the 23rd, and we moved to the 30th.
Right, we did move it. I'm sorry. Yes.
Holiday.
So I will make a motion to approve the budget calendar as amended with the March 26th at 4:00 PM.
Seconded. Any questions? Hearing none? All in favor? Motion carries. Alrighty, moving on to fiscal year '25 school calendar draft.
Thank you. I have attached the first draft of the 24-25 school calendar. There's a few changes to this calendar that I want to point out. First of all, we tried and tried. We currently have four early release days in this year's calendar. There are only three in the upcoming school year. And we are trying to avoid conflicts with the high school MCAS schedule. So we were, we had a draft last year of when those dates would be, and then we had a conflict this month. And Desi has told us that although their official MCAS schedule will not be published till April, we could pretty much rely on the fact that it would be about the same time. So we're staying away from February, March, April, and May due to MCAS.
I was gonna ask that question because it just seemed like there was not a half-day anywhere in there.
No. So we're staying away between the vacation breaks and the MCAS testing schedule. There's just no way to fit it in. We're also returning that January PD to the traditional spot because we have it in March this year for the presidential primary election. The other thing, there's a couple of points on this that we would like to point out. First of all, because of the December holidays, that's a very long break next year. And due to that, I'm going to say it a number of times, most likely with snow, no one should be planning a vacation the last full week in June. Snow days are scheduled to go into that week, so it is a, potentially a very late June end of school year. So I'm not asking for a vote on this, so we're looking for any feedback. So we're not, I'm not asking for a vote on this, so we're looking for any feedback or changes prior to the first week, first meeting in March.
Questions?
One, this is just an observation, I was trying to figure out what the asterisks in the June, July summer school, there's some ones, there's some twos, and there's some not. Did it refer to something?
So the ones with the little stars, those are the camp in invention weeks.
Yeah, but like the sixteenth has two, but I, I don't know, it was new.
I think she forgot it on seventeen and put two on sixteen.
Okay.
Yep, that's what happened.
Yeah, probably. It happens. I get it. I just, so.
Migrated.
Yeah, it migrated. I would like to point out that currently April twenty-second is proposed as the second school committee meeting of the month because it is the fourth Tuesday, but that is vacation week, and I would suggest whether people are taking vacation or not, that we probably would want to propose changing it to the twenty-ninth.
Okay, we can look at that because I thought we checked that date and, all right, yep, you're right.
It is during, no, it's during school vacation week.
I know, but we are moving one in April because of a holiday, so we have to figure where that lines up with the holiday, the Jewish holiday.
I already looked.
No, we, we looked those already.
We're fine.
So we want to move the twenty-second to the twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth, that makes sense.
And I see you have a question mark on the graduation date, but I believe based on the way the rules are, June first would be the day. Right?
Yeah. First Sunday in June.
Yeah. It seems very early, but it's, if the sixteenth is supposed to be the last day, that, that's the legal Desi.
Yes, it's based on the.
Last day, the proposed last day.
The proposed last day.
Yeah. We could have ten school days.
The one hundred eightieth, not the one eighty-five.
No, right. That was the only things that I, as I said, I was surprised to not see an early release day in the springtime somewhere.
March looks really long.
Long, yeah, it does.
You'll have a lot of actions in that month.
Yeah, so, so do you want to table this?
I do want to table it until, so if people are looking at it and notice anything else, we've counted the days multiple times, but it doesn't hurt for someone else to count them as well. And then because we have a short turnaround, we will bring the final one for a vote to the first meeting in March.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other further discussions? If not, motion.
Motion to table the proposed calendar.
Motion to table and seconded. Any other further questions? If not, all in favor, motion is to table, carries. All righty, moving on to memorandum of agreement between the Marlboro School Committee and the Behavioral Technicians.
Earlier this evening in executive session, the school committee voted to make an amendment between, or, excuse me, a memorandum of agreement between the school committee and the behavioral techs regarding the condition of hire, and it was unanimously agreed upon in executive session and would like to have a public vote as well. So I'd like to make a motion on the MOU between the school committee and the behavioral techs.
Is there a motion on the table?
Motion, yep, second.
Seconded. Any other further discussion? Not, all in favor, motion carries.
Thank you.
All righty, moving on to G, the acceptance of donations and gifts. I believe there's two here, so the first one is from Immaculate Conception for the amount of one thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
And seconded, any questions? If not, all in favor, motion carries. The second one is from Hope and Comfort for the amount of fifteen hundred. Is there a motion on the table?
Motion to approve.
And seconded, any questions? If not, all in favor, and that motion carries as well to be approved.
We have doing the grants?
I, I don't have that in my list. My apologies. Thank you. All right, thank you. FY twenty-four, FC thirty-four homeless emergency report for fifty-five thousand.
Motion to approve.
And seconded, all in favor?
Question, I have a question. Is this part of the, this is not the money that we're still waiting on, correct, from the state regarding?
Fifty-five thousand, no.
No, no.
This, this is for supplies and coats and boots.
Yeah, and, and I guess.
This is one thousand, right?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
This is five, yeah, fifty, so I guess with all of the donations that were done and all the things, I hate to say this publicly, but where is this fifty-five thousand dollars going to?
So this is the thousand dollars per student that is in a grant form at the beginning of the year for the application, they had capped it at fifteen thousand, even though at that time we had forty-five, forty-five students. So that grant is the one that the wraparound service providers use, that they are using for things like Uber, Lyft cards, doing Amazon or Walmart orders for anything that's not donated, like winter, winter coats, boots.
My concern was just that it, it was listed as immediate basic needs, and I didn't want to be pigeonholed.
It's, it's not, they have a wide range of.
Okay.
They've gotten like a laptop for a family before that didn't have any devices at home to be able to access services.
Thank you. That answered my question.
Okay, motion to approve on the table? Yes, and seconded, all in favor, motion carries. Next item is Fiscalia twenty-four, FC one twenty-five Math Acceleration for sixty-two thousand seven hundred dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And seconded, any questions?
I have a question. Sorry, Mary, and maybe you might be able to answer this. In looking at the explanation, which page is it? It's the second page of it, the budget entry, second page, where it breaks up what it's going towards. So it says administrators, one, because it's the February and April, so there's, at a rate of four thousand dollars, so two equals eight thousand.
Yeah.
Teacher instructional staff professional day is February and April, nine.
Yeah.
At a rate of three thousand, is the twenty-seven thousand. Support staff, February and April, is nine at fifteen hundred, which is thirteen-five, but I don't know how you divide nine in half. You know what I'm saying? That, why, wouldn't that be double if it's February and April? Like you did? I, I don't know, I just, unless I'm reading it completely wrong.
Yeah, I don't think it's a one-to-one, so it might be more five on one and four on another, it's a total of nine.
Okay. It just caught my eye, that was all.
Each sports, each support staff gets fifteen hundred dollars for the vacation week.
Okay, and then.
Yes. Yes, it's not ten.
Yeah, and then February and April for the nurses was, there's one nurse on for each of those.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. I do have one other question though, regarding the grant.
Okay.
Because this is coming up. Do we have many students enrolled in our accelerated academies?
Can I just answer the overall? Because we have Math Academy, we have Attendance Academies happening at both the Whitcomb and the high school, the elementary is scheduled for April. We have ELA happening as well, some targeted students for that for February, and then science would be April.
Great, terrific, thank you. Happy to hear that our money's being spent in the right places.
So that's the different ones, but are they well subscribed?
Yeah, I don't have a number off the top of my head, I want to say we had at least thirty students who were signed up early, but I'm not sure where I'm pulling that number from, but I can get you that information and let you know.
This grant has a requirement, it's, it's a maximum of ten to one. It is designed to be small groups. I was talking to Dr. Riley earlier today, I'm sorry that he left, but he said that, I believe the number was forty-five students enrolled for the Attendance Academy at the high school.
Oh, great, that's great.
Yeah, they've really been reaching out and trying to get that.
Any further discussion? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion and seconded. Any questions? If not, all in favor, motion carries. Last one is Esther Thir- Three, set aside CFDA eighty-four point four-two U for ten thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Motion and seconded, any questions on it? If not, all in favor, motion carries. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on to reports of school committee subcommittees. Heidi?
Negotiations, subcommittee has what limited information we can report out, we are in negotiations currently with our teachers union, and that is going very well. We will be meeting for our third meeting tomorrow night with them. We have begun with Unit V, our administrators, we've had our first meeting and scheduled upcoming meetings, and we will be opening with our paraprofessional unit in March, early March, and that's where we stand right now. And I will do my best to provide whatever information to the public that we can during these negotiation times, but most is in executive session and can't be shared until completely ratified.
All righty, and there's no other subcommittee reports, so we're moving on to the members' forum. Signed the warrant.
I reviewed and signed the warrant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, I think that's, yes, is there anything for Ms. Riley?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that over the weekend, we had the Polar Plunge, which the Marlboro High School Student Council and Best Buddies Clubs participated in, and we raised over five thousand dollars, and fundraising is still ongoing, so hopefully more, but yeah, that was awesome, it was awesome to do, it was a fun thing, yeah.
It was warm, you didn't have a freezing cold day.
It was super warm. It was actually on Sunday, so it wasn't the warm day.
Congratulations on the fundraising, yeah, great job. All righty, if there's anything else, yes.
I just wanted to let you all know that I participated in the website group meeting, which was great to review the options and situation, and Mr. Henry is moving forward on, you know, some direction. I personally is, have started to work on the behind the scenes of the policy stuff so that we can then have a policy subcommittee meeting, but I'm trying to do the prep work, so it's, I'm bringing something that we can hopefully move forward with quickly to help to then move towards this website, and I, you know, the aim is to have it up and running what, July is the aim, so, but it was exciting, I think, knock on wood. So hopefully having a calendar situation that works for everybody, so, and thanks for including me.
You're welcome.
Anyone else for the members' forum? Seeing none?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn is on the table and seconded. Any questions? I don't think so, so all in favor? We have adjourned at eight twenty-four. Thank you, everyone.